Next item will be to approve the agenda. You should have printed the agenda before you. Any questions, comments, or a motion over the agenda?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion by Commissioner McClellan to approve. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Commissioner Carlwack. Any further discussion on the agenda? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries now. Alright, next item will be to approve minutes. We have an August 12th work session, an August 12th regular meeting, we have an August 15th 10:00 AM public hearing, and August 15th 7:00 PM public hearing, August 16th special call meeting, August 26th special call meeting, August 31st special call meeting. Those minutes are in your packets. Everybody's had time to review them. Are there any additions, changes, deletion, anything? Okay, here and now, someone might offer a motion on those minutes.
I make a motion, we approve all the minutes. August 12th, 13th, 15th, 15th, 16th, 26th, and 30th, 56th.
Thirty minutes. Okay. I would have a motion by Commissioner Watson to approve all. Is there a second?
Yeah.
Second by Commissioner Carlwack. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries now. Alright, we'll move right into the Section F, visitor presentations. We have Commissioner Ty Popple, Public Executive Director, for an update on the hurricane.
Yeah, I tried this last night. I'll try to do a little better today and streamline a little bit. I ate twenty and had to set the door in on it. Basically, we had another close call. We were scheduled for 10:15 into the rain, high winds, a hurricane force winds, and flood inundations. And we didn't get it. We got late. We were successful as far as what we did in activating the EOC and keeping y'all posted, citizens of county posted on what was going on. Feel like we did a good job of doing that. There's all those places that we can improve in. I believe that's listed back in the back of your packets there, or the papers that gave you my address and report. I have some people we need to recognize as far as what they did for us. One of them was school board. They were fantastic. Anything we asked them about, asked them to do, they were at their force. Of course, Board of Commissioners, y'all support this new decision we made. Also, we had a team in there, and they're not visiting here. We had two GMA representatives with us every time, Diane Adams and a Don Strength, that were there for us. Anything we asked of them, they took care of it with the state. Moving right along, there's a couple of things due to this storm and us getting lucky and not having the inundation we had up here. We had a total of nine trees down. Nothing serious, no flood inundation, no heavy rains. But we're still lacking the people signing up for the Special Function League Registry through the Health Department. And we put it out on Facebook and tried to get it out further in the dairy news, by how they can go and sign up. Well, we had several people calling in for this hurricane that couldn't evacuate before a sale, a lot of sales, and didn't have family with the system. And if they're not on that registry, we can't compare them. Other thing was code red alerts. And if we get more citizens signing up for it, we can get word out better about what's happening and what's coming its way to us. And the other thing is reentry passes. I don't know how many people called me about reentry passes, and now they're approved through GMA. And you have to go to the GMA website to get the application for it, and you can submit it through email, and get your passes. They're going to decide what schedule, what category we can fill in, as far as reentry into after disaster. Other than that, like I said, your sheets I gave explain a lot of what went on, it's kind of like a timeline, and what we can do to improve some things. Other than that, we got lucky, everybody mentioned.
We appreciate it. I won't pick on you a little bit, because last night you maybe everybody except the school board, then tonight you didn't. You left out the City Police Department, Sheriff's Office. And you covered them well last night, and I appreciate it.
Yeah, I handled it well. If it wasn't for every county department, every city department.
Road, water, everybody was there.
Everybody.
City road crew, City Police Department, Sheriff's Office, everybody was there.
Yeah.
And we appreciate it.
And wasn't going to take up a lot of y'all's time reading on everyone, but they're all listening.
Last night you didn't leave them out, so I just did it for them. You want us to leave them out?
I appreciate it.
We appreciate that. We appreciate you, everybody. I thought everybody did a good job.
It's a group effort, it's not one person doing it.
Unfortunately, four storms in three years are kind of getting good. We've had enough practice.
Might not come back.
That's right.
We got some more kicking around in here, tropics. And hopefully, they're going to be flybys or go somewhere else. And we want to work out, we'll keep monitoring this until it happens.
Thank you. Okay, next under visitor presentation, we have Mr. John Brinkin, Goodwood Mills and Kaywood Incorporated, to talk about the McIntosh County Recreation Complex, proposed complex.
Wouldn't it be possible if you set up every year so that they can?
Sure could.
I just have someone ask us on Skype. We really wouldn't say.
Alright.
Five years ago. Sorry.
Excited to be here, glad to be here. Thank you for this opportunity. I'm John Brinkin with GMC. Rob Brown is also here. Part of EPG, the functional planning group, was acquisition about a year ago. And Rob kind of brings our landscape of architectural services and sports design services to cultural jewelry. So glad to be here. Couple of parks I want to bring up that we've worked on in the past, that have components from those parks that we propose in your park. Park over, this Chalkalaka Park, it's a multi-sport park, it's for tribal sports, it has softball fields, baseball fields combined, it has soccer fields, tractor fields, and also some signature fields, more return to play, kind of a championship field. They use it, the C-Lox are using it for cross-country meets, high schools use it, local universities, community colleges use it as well. Just want to show that was a similar project. This is another larger scale project, it still has the same components, as far as the tennis component, soccer field, multi-use type field for football, soccer, to be played different durations for younger age groups, for multiple field use. And also, this was, a lot of this was synthetic turf. If we were to explore that, that initiative for that type of playing surface. Yeah, let's go ahead and turn it to your park. Your park is approximately 70 acres, and we're looking at doing a couple of football soccer fields on it. Four field, kind of four field pond, we call it, kind of a pinwheel shape. We're showing 300 foot fields on there, so you can play baseball, softball, multiple age groups on those fields, with temporary fences, or using the permanent fences at 300. Lot of tribal ball sports, 12 and under are using that 225 field and under, and have a four field complex, so you could host a weekend tournament, have league ball during the spring, and play tennis on. And there's tribal ball sports going on in the park, so there's always fields in continued use. And also, we're showing some tennis courts, we're showing some walking trails through the lowland areas here, parking, kind of a ring road parking that we go all the way around, and have a spur of parking there. Approximately, we're showing around 400 parking spaces. That would be sufficient for that size. And then, we're also showing areas that we could expand for future, possible gymnasium, we've got playgrounds, potential pond for stormwater control, but it's also to be used as a feature as well, so. It'd be great for this community. It'd be, you build it, they will come.
Alright. You know, last night, we had just touched on, you were at our workshop last night, and we had asked you, you had this question about, you know, what's our experience in rural communities? Are you seeing, you know, new complexes?
We are, we are. I actually just met today with Pierce County, they're looking at doing expansion to their park. They're looking, I guess, population wise, maybe a little bit bigger than McIntosh County, but not the same comparable. And they're going through the same planning stages right now. We're seeing it throughout Georgia, within southeast.
Does anybody have any questions or comments, or anything I want to add?
Any idea of any kind of economical impact that this has had on our county?
Oh, wow. We'd have to do some study, a visibility study, but there are numbers out there. We should all, we can look into that.
Any Commissioners have any questions or comments at this point? I know we have a action item coming up on the agenda that may have some questions, but do you all have any questions or comments for Mr. Brinkin at this time? Okay, we're here now. Thank you for being here. Thank you for the presentation. Appreciate you being here last night. Thank you. Alright, so that concludes our visitor presentation. So we'll move into public hearing, and we have received comments on, or we'll go into our public hearing on how we open. And we'll receive comments from the public on proposed fiscal year 2020 operating budget for all county funds. All Commissioners should have a proposed budget in front of them for 2020. So at this time, we will open the floor to any public who has questions on the budget. I skipped over you. Let's do this, I'll close the public hearing, and then I'll bring you back up. I'm sorry.
Alright, thank you.
My full intention was to recognize you beginning of the meeting.
I was a little, you got a lot longer.
I'm sorry. So we will be in this public hearing, and again, the floor is open for public comment. And if there isn't a public comment, the floor will be obviously empty. Commissioners staff, they have any comments.
I'll go. The county budget is the most important law that the county commission acts every year, and by law it has to be budgeted. The budget in front of you is budgeted for all county funds, including the general fund, all special revenue funds, and the enterprise fund. If this budget is adopted later on in this meeting, we would have a general fund budget of $12,242,169. Oweless amount, 61% collected through taxes. That'd be various taxes, property taxes, outdoor taxes on vehicles, timber tax, all those taxes. 23% through fines and forfeitures, 5% through charges for services, 1% through licenses and permits, and 10% through other services. Or other revenues. As far as the expenses, 68% are salary benefits, 17% purchased for contracted services, 7% for supplies, 2% for utilities, 3% for capital outlay, and 3% for transfer to other agencies. That would be something similar to the transfer to the board, to the things they do for us, and D-backs, and things such as that. The 2020 budget does allow for a 5% cost of living raise for all county employees. It also allows the fire stock money to go from $15 a run for firefighter to $20 per run. This budget also provides some additional funding for several county facilities, including the only ball fields, the courthouse, the community center on the lower end, and stuff like that. And if you look through your budget, I just, I recommend reading the budget messages, and there'll be a lot more details in there.
Again, does any Commissioners have any comments at this time? Okay, it's a lot of work that went into this. We had a very productive retreat. It was more than just that day, department headed, staff, everybody worked hard on this. And I think the manager said, what, this is the 12th budget you've been applying on?
11.
11th budget? That's the first time there was ever a surplus, a grand total of about $6,000. And we chose as a commission to pass that on to the firefighters, so that's where that surplus went. But good job on this, and if there's no comment from the public, we're going to close our public hearing at this time. So the public hearing will be closed, and we'll move into item H, which is old business. Consider amendment to the McIntosh County zoning ordinance. Don't stop. Before we go into that, we want to recognize Mr. Key. Mr. Key is our chief tax advisor, and he had some information for us that I was supposed to do at the very beginning of the meeting.
Thank you for your time today. Hello, thank you for your time today. I have a little written statement. First, greetings to our honorable Commissioners. Speaking on behalf of McIntosh Board of Recessions, which consists of Chairman Unis Moore, Vice Chair Sandy Lason, Board members John Vernon, Thomas Gore, Ronald Williams, I, your chief and president, wanted to convey some new information from our department. That's why we are audited twice a year, once by the Department of Revenue and once by the Department of Audits. The first form in your packets are the results of those audits, first being from the Department of Revenue, which states that the McIntosh County 2019 average on tax digest has been found to be improper, authorizing the tax commissioner to collect taxes. The second are the results from the state auditor, where the sales and appraisals were matched to assessments of McIntosh County and found to be in compliance. Each county in Georgia must be close to 40% ratio in sales to assessments. If not, you're deemed to be out of compliance, which occurs a per parcel penalty. McIntosh County overall ratio for 2019 is at 39.63%. We have passed each audit for the past four years. Next, you will see the five year history for McIntosh. Through the diligent and hard work of my staff, the digest has increased the past three years. During my tenure, we have corrected the state forest land grant issues, also initiated a full review of all mobile homes, which has brought in an estimated $10,000 in collected back taxes since June. Within our budget requests, highlighted, we're concerned about some of the aging equipment and vacant positions within our office, and hope you can provide us with the tools necessary to continue to serve the citizens of McIntosh County to the best of our ability. We would like to recognize the tax commissioner's office, the court of court, both city and county building and zoning office, and also you, the Commissioners, in becoming a more cohesive effort in serving the citizens of McIntosh. Thank you for your time.
Alright, thank you. I'm sorry I skipped over you. Nothing positive, things out of your office that's been there, and we really do appreciate you. I've heard it from other department heads, our staff, never mind, but thank you. Any Commissioners have any questions or comments for Mr. Payton?
Just keep on kicking on.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Alright, now we will move into old business, item H. Be considered amendments to the McIntosh County zoning ordinance. This is an action item, it was postponing from last month's meeting to this month, and I think with some stuff that's coming up further down the agenda, there was some discussion in the workshop last night to actually, to deny this, to let this down. Is there any others you have?
No, sir, just like, as you mentioned last month, we asked you to postpone the amendments due to some discrepancy between the zoning board and the admin staff. And this month, we're asking you to adopt a contract that will renew the whole ordinance, so we are asking that you deny the changes that were presented last month.
Okay. Alright, was anyone like to offer a motion on item one under old business?
I make the motion that we deny the McIntosh County zoning ordinance.
Motion to deny, is there a second? Second. Second by Commissioner Watson. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries now. Alright, that's everything on our old business. We'll move into new business. Number one, consider resolution 2019-11, adopting the fiscal year 2020 operating budget. This is an action item, does the manager have anything else he wants to add at this point?
Yes, sir.
Okay, this is the budget that we just had the public hearing on. Does any Commissioners have any questions or comments on this budget? Okay, here and now, someone might offer a motion?
Commissioner McClellan makes a motion to accept resolution 2019-11 to adopt the 2020 operating budget.
Motion to accept by Commissioner McClellan, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Watson, any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries now. Okay, number two, consider a contract with Coastal Regional Commission to prepare a new zoning and subdivision ordinance. This is an action item. There's no one here in the CRC tonight, but they were here last night and did a presentation, but would you like to speak on that, please?
Yes, sir. This contract is for the CRC to facilitate the rewriting of the McIntosh County zoning and zoning ordinance and subdivision ordinance. Our current ordinance is very vague and very hard to manage at the zoning office and the admin office. The cost of the revision is $25,000, which Mr. Lynn stated last night, it's actually $50,000 from the state will cover the other half if you do it through the CRC. It has been budgeted into the 2020 budget. The CRC will draft the ordinances, facilitate all meetings in the steering committee, committee, and facilitate all public hearings that you expect to have as a draft within six months and follow adoption within twelve months.
Thank you.
Mrs. Lovett is here.
Ma'am?
Mrs. Lovett is here.
I am with the CRC, but I'm not speaking on this issue.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, is there any questions or comments from the Commissioners on this?
I would like to make a comment in the sense that it's a great opportunity for us to write some, I won't say wrong, but to make some clarity. And so I'd like the public to make sure that as we appoint advisors to these boards, that they will get with those individuals, to make sure their voices are hers, and once these rules are in place, it is my intention to always vote to support the boards that have to live by these rules.
Thank you. Someone might offer a motion on the contract with the CRC to prepare a new zoning and subdivision ordinance?
I'll make the motion that we create a contract with the Coastal Regional Commission to prepare a new zoning and subdivision ordinance.
Got a motion by Commissioner Watson, is there a second? Second. Second by Commissioner Watson, any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries now. We'll move into number three, consider a appointment to the McIntosh County zoning ordinance steering committee. This is an action item, there's a list in your packets. Manager wants to speak on it?
Just on the list, I made some suggestions for positions throughout the county, that being two Commissioners, the County Managers, the Deputy County Manager, Code Enforcement Officer, the Building and Zoning Administrator, the Building Inspector, two members from the Planning and Zoning Board, two members from the Historic Preservation Board, three members from the Sapporo Island Community, and three general community members who I would say would probably need to be a builder, a real estate agent, people on those bills, people that use the ordinance.
Alright, again, this was discussed in great detail in the workshop last night. There's some names on the list ahead in front of you, and I think someone wants to offer a motion with some other names?
Manager, come in first.
Absolutely.
To clarify and qualify everything, what we just talked about, I guess most everybody understands it, but the agreement that we have now with the CRC and Coastal Regional Commission, these folks that we'll name in just a moment, will be working in conjunction with the CRC, and they'll just be a liaison group within each other. So we had some John Q. citizens involved, we had Coastal Regional Commission involved, a lot of different, I guess, a lot of different identities. So we feel like we're going to get some good response and get a good agreement together at some point, and the sooner the better. So that was just to clarify what's going on. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to, by the way, we reviewed this last night at our workshop, our manager has made some recommendations, some of us have made some recommendations, and in the essence of time, I'm going to make a motion regarding several of these people, Mr. Chairman, and we'll see if it's agreeable with the rest of the folks. The steering committee's suggestions, and our recommendation, or at least I'd like to make the motion, that the two Commissioners that represent the steering committee would be Roger Watson and Kate Carlwack, and also an alternate, David Stevens, in the event that Mr. Watson is not able to attend, because he is currently employed with three or four different positions. But I'd like to make that recommendation. Of course, the County Manager, Patrick Zalz, Deputy County Manager, Sean Gordon, Code Enforcement Officer, Ty Popple, Building and Zoning Administrator, Archie Davis, Building Inspector, Donna Moody. Also, from the Planning and Zoning Board members, there's several members here, but we identified two, Mr. Frank Lunsford and William Chamberlain. Also on this motion, I would like to include, from the Historic Preservation Board, Mr. Buddy Sullivan and Unice Moore. Sapporo Island Community, we've named three, Tracy Walker, Mr. Bill Hodges, and Maurice Bailey. The community members, Tony Martin and Mr. Martin Neesmith. We avoid one. I'd like to make a motion that we approve these that I've just read, and then I think we can identify additional ones.
Alright, it's a long list of names that all the Commissioners get at.
Who was the third one for the Sapporo Island community members? I have Tracy Walker, Bill Hodges, and.
Maurice Bailey.
Maurice Bailey.
So we have a motion, is there a second? Second. Second by Commissioner Watson. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries now. Thank you. Alright, number four, consider a contract with Goodwood Mills.
I thought you just said we just would come back to that.
But we can address that, right?
We'll be scared.
Does that have to be heard?
If that fits on two, it'd be an even number of one.
What, I'm sure, you mentioned that earlier?
You said this person would be the, a certain.
Somebody that would use the ordinance, maybe a real estate agent, or builder, or developer.
I'll throw a name out there, how about the Chairman of the Development Authority, Chris Harper, if he would be willing to serve?
That leads into a question. Has everybody on the proposal list been asked and made explicit to serve? Because this is going to be a pretty lengthy process.
Some have, some haven't. There's some obvious.
Right, right.
And the Sapporo Island community members have been approached.
I'm just checking. What about that builder that was brought up the last month's meeting, that's building over there?
Mr. Mitchell.
Or like we mentioned, Sharon Grayden are being involved in some of the community studies.
Yeah, I was just trying to, I was hitting that, though. If they're active in the community, or they're active in building and zoning and code.
What about another name? I'm okay with it. Cheryl.
So put that forward in the question.
I would like to make a motion to add, Ms. Grayden, assuming that she's willing to serve as the third.
You say Sharon?
Yes.
Okay, okay, yeah, from Sapporo.
We've been with that, but we would need to ask her, and I obviously haven't answered.
What was the first one?
Sharon. S-H-A-R-R-O-N.
Used to be known as Jordette. So is that the motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Watson. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries now. Alright. So, now, item number four, consider a contract with Goodwood Mills, Kaywood, GMC for engineering services for the McIntosh County Recreation Complex.
administration services, and post construction services. The overall estimated project cost is 5.5 to 6.5 million dollars. The total cost of the engineering services contract is 585,925. The contract does provide a termination clause within seven days' notice without reason, and there's no termination fee for that. The only change from the contract from the one of y'all's packets is section 5.4 to 5.5 will be moved in the new contract.
All right, and again, there was much discussion on this last night and weeks and months leading up to this meeting tonight, but this was part of the 2016 squalls.
Yes, sir.
And it's years four, five, and six for payments on the bond. Years five and six?
Yes.
Years five and six for bond payments on this new rec complex. Obviously, we are still in the very early stages of this, but it's time to move it forward. And last night, we did discuss, in the event that we get far enough into this, and we decided it's bigger than us, it's bigger than what we can afford, it's bigger than what McIntosh County can swing. You know, we did say that we noted these initial engineering design surveys, you know, we will be able to hook for approximately $35,000 to begin with.
That's right.
So I just want to make that clear. So does anybody else have anything to add or comments with that? All right, well, somebody offer a motion to consider this contract with Goodwood Mills Kaywood.
I'll make a motion to approve the contract with Goodwood Mills Kaywood for the engineering services for Recreation Complex.
I have a motion by Commissioner McClellan, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Watson, any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries now. Number five, appoint a local government agent for House Bill 381, Abandoned Mobile Home Act. This is an action item in the last amendment of the police department.
Yes, sir. House Bill 381, it was passed by the General Assembly, and it became active back in May 1st, 2019, and after it removed light and raised property values by removing abandoned mobile homes throughout the county, throughout the state. That requires us to appoint a local government agent who is qualified to determine if an abandoned home is derelict or intact. And once that determination is made, it is deemed to be non-littable. The Act gives guidance on how to get rid of that non-littable court system. My recommendation for that is to approve to Mr. Archie Davis.
Okay. Anybody have any further comments or questions for staff?
Does the bill specify what qualifies as itself?
Thank you for providing Scott. It does provide governance.
It says, I think it's in the whole second page, talks about in 34,712. When, if you mention that, you know, it's got-
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
What is the definition of derelict? Would be the-
It goes on with- It was like ventilation-
That's right.
Fire, you know, water, act of natural nature.
The manager has made a recommendation of Mr. Archie Davis, does somebody want to offer a motion to that effect?
Make a motion to appoint Archie Davis as the local government agent for HB 381, Abandoned Mobile Home Act.
A motion by Commissioner Watson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner McClellan, any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries now. All right, number six, consider resolution 2019-12 rescinding state of emergency for Hurricane Noreen. This is an action item. I think this is pretty self-explanatory, you have anything to add?
No, sir. Just brings us out of state of emergency, puts us back in our day-to-day operations.
Somebody want to offer a motion on number six?
I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution 2019-12 to rescind state of emergency for Hurricane Noreen.
Motion to approve, Commissioner McClellan, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner McClellan, any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries now. All right, number seven, consider resolution 2019-12 rescinding state of emergency for Hurricane Noreen. This is an action item. I think this is pretty self-explanatory, you have anything to add?
No, sir. Just brings us out of state of emergency, puts us back in our day-to-day operations.
Somebody want to offer a motion on number six?
I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution 2019-12 to rescind state of emergency for Hurricane Noreen.
Motion to approve, Commissioner McClellan, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner, call back any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries now. All right, number seven, consider intergovernmental agreement with McIntosh County industrial development authority for original equipment. This is an action item, manager, please speak on this.
Yes, sir. This IGA determines whether restaurant equipment is owed Wendy Fielding to McIntosh County Industrial Development Authority to sell on behalf of the county. The IGA allows the development authority to market the equipment to investors and developers in the county who wish to open a restaurant within the county. It also puts the equipment back on our out-of-warm tax digest, once they sell it to that individual. Any proceeds from the sale of the equipment would go and turn back into the McIntosh County visitor center.
Okay. Anybody have any questions or comments on number seven? Somebody want to offer a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the resolution 2019-13, deem mobile home taxes, or, excuse me. Okay. I'm trying to get around through this. Make a motion to accept the intergovernmental agreement with the McIntosh County Industrial Development Authority for the restaurant.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Watson, any further discussion?
Yeah.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries now. All right, number eight, consider resolution 2019-13, deem mobile home taxes as uncollectible. This is an action item. We had several people speak on this last night. We had Mr. Keith Payne speak, we had Mr. Juan Nelson speak, I know Miss John Anne's here tonight. Did you have anything to add or case of any questions? Is that what you have? All right, we appreciate you being here. So would manager like to speak on this, or the attorney number one?
Yes, sir. Resolution 2019-13, it authorizes the tax commission to write off of $69,224 in uncollectible mobile home taxes. These taxes have been deemed uncollectible because the mobile homes no longer exist or they're no longer within our county lines.
Okay.
Can I just ask, and I might be getting ahead of myself again, just can you explain a little bit, I know we had a lot of discussion, but what will be kind of moving forward, the plan for making sure that we don't have $70,000 in uncollective taxes, so that we can handle that kind of thing about?
Well, right now, what we're looking at, I mean, we have our president here who is vigilantly going out, his, you know, his staff, checking these things, because, you know, prior to that, people were not getting permits, you know, so we had no way of knowing when something was taken out on the weekend or whatnot. So it's basically him going out, you know, his staff going out and checking. That's how they found so much of this, you know, is not being moved within the county. So we are being vigilant on that.
And since the public will be able to watch, can you, maybe some of it's just not knowing, maybe, they should know, but what do they need to do, I mean, other than pay yearly taxes, but if you're leaving the county, they just hook up to it and-
Right, they, I mean, they should go to the building and zoning and apply for a permit, a moving permit. That's going to be transferred over to the assessor's office, who in turn then knows when, you know, to remove it from the tax digest. We make sure then that all taxes are paid before they can get that permit to move it.
And everyone should know that if they own a piece of land and they're going to bring a trailer in onto that, they would need to go where to get-
Also to, for another permit, you know, to move in or move out. They should have a permit back there.
Or demolition permit.
Yes, all right.
So, any other questions or comments on this? Would someone like to offer a motion on resolution 2019-13?
Make the motion that we approve resolution 2019-13, deem mobile home taxes as uncollectible.
A motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Watson, any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries now. Okay, number nine, consider resolution 2019-14, amending the fiscal year 2019 budget. 2019, manager, please speak on this.
Yes, sir. This resolution amends the 2019 budget of allocating additional revenues of $180,000 to the state court fees items on the revenue side, and an additional $180,000 to capital expenditures in the sheriff's department on the expenditure side. This expenditure would be used to purchase additional patrol vehicles for the county sheriff's department. With the addition of these vehicles, our fleet will get closer to where it needs to be. We have been ordering vehicles out of our 2016 squalls, which has improved our fleet and reducing our R and D costs on our patrol vehicles.
Thank you, sir. Any questions or comments on this item, or any questions for staff? Okay, here, number nine, someone like to offer a motion on resolution 2019-14 to amend the 2019 budget.
I'd like to motion that we approve the resolution 2019-14, amend the 2019 budget.
All right, we have a motion, is there a second?
A second.
Second by Commissioner, call back any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries now. Okay, number 10, under new business, consider employment contract with the county attorney. This is an action item, manager, please speak on this contract.
Yes, sir. This is an employment contract with county attorney. It's a three-year contract to expire on September 30th, 2022. All provisions of the contract remain the same as the previous contract and the terms that were discussed at our annual budget treaty.
Okay, all right. Again, we discussed this at the budget treaty, and we discussed it last night in the workshop. Any further discussion or comments on it tonight? Somebody want to offer a motion on the employment contract with the county attorney?
Make a motion we approve the employment contract for the county attorney.
A motion, a motion, a motion by Commissioner Watson to approve, is there a second?
One second.
Second by Commissioner McClellan, any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries now. All right, last item under new, next to the last item under new business, number 11, consider employment contract with the county managers, this is an action item. Do you want to speak to us on the old contract?
Yes, sir. This is an employment contract for me for four years, set to expire on September 30th, 2023. All provisions remain the same as my previous contract and the items that were discussed at our annual budget treaty. The only difference between my, this contract and my previous contract is vacation type of three weeks a year, four weeks a year, and the contract no longer allows for $100 a month technology allowance instead of the county driving, the county itself on the county approval multiple.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Any further discussion at this time? Somebody want to offer a motion on the county manager's contract?
I'd like a motion that we approve the employment contract with the county manager for the four-year period.
Motion by Commissioner Watson to approve the county manager's contract, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Watson, any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries now. Last item under new business, consider changing the October 2019 meeting date. This is an action item, and I think we talked about, what did we talk about last night?
October 7.
October 7. Would someone like to offer a motion on changing that date?
You going to do a workshop, Anna, at a meeting in St. Reginald?
Yes, sir, we are. Workshop at 5:00, meeting will be in the morning?
I don't think it'll be a heavy agenda at all.
October 7?
October 7. That's the first. It'll be the second.
It'd be the first, it'd be the first Monday, but the second Thursday.
The second Tuesday, I'm sorry, we mentioned that, the second Tuesday.
Okay, okay.
So it's going to be October 7. All right. Yes, sir.
I think you'd need to list the time for the start of the regular meeting also.
All right, so if it pleases the commission, October 7, we'll have a workshop at 5:00, and a meeting, the regular meeting will be at 5:30.
So I'd like to make a motion to change the October meeting to October 7 with a work session at 5:00, preceded by the meeting at 5:30.
Do you want me to have a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Watson, any further discussion on this change in the date? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries now. All right, that's everything under new business, so we'll move right into county commissioner reports. We'll start with Commissioner Carlwanken.
Hi, I'm here.
Commissioner Watson.
Yes, on yesterday, Maggie Backenford?
That's who it is?
From 4H gave a presentation about 4H, and one of the main things that I took away from it, I want the public to know, is that she's limited on the number of kids that she can service in the county, because she's the only adult. In order to expand the number of kids and to give them more opportunities, we need more adult volunteers. So I would encourage the citizens to consider volunteering with the 4Hs, so that more of our citizens can take advantage of this great opportunity. That's it, that's it.
Thank you, Commissioner Watson, Commissioner McClellan.
I just had a few thank yous. I wanted to thank Mr. Popple for coming tonight and the list of volunteers that he gave us and that we worked with last week on the hurricane, on the incident that we missed, thankfully. Also, the animal services with Marion, giving us a report and being very diligent with that. I know we had an incident that was in the paper, I think it was last week, and they're doing a whole lot with that department, and I just want to commend them for that. Also, with the recreation complex, I know that we talked about it last night and then again tonight, but just want to kind of thank the recreation board and the past commissioners for that vision. I'm a personal supporter of that, with three kids that play a lot of sports, and we get a lot of complexes, and I'm excited for what it can do for our community. And last night, they mentioned pickleball, and tonight they didn't, so I want to make sure we got that out there. We've got a group that's really into that. Also, the assessor's office, I did want to thank Keith while he's here and in front of the camera, because, you know, I think that it's been a pretty big job for him to shore up everything, so to speak, and get everything up to compliance, and plus to be so close to that 40% says a lot. So I want to thank you for that, I appreciate all you're doing and your staff.
Does that conclude your report?
It does.
You know, familiar about the adoptive foster right there? It's an animal service.
Yes, the adoptive foster.
Commissioner Watson.
Just, I would like to mention Mr. Patrick Zalz's name, and his staff and people, Ty Popple, our all the lawyers here, all the claws, but Patrick has really done a great job as well, so thank you. And the 2016 squalls is underway as far as our fire station up in Sheldon, Rhode, and it appears that it should be, the new fire station should be complete about mid-November, according to our deputy county manager, who might put you on the spot, so we thank you for your help, and that's it.
Okay, so we'll move into the chairman's report, and I too, like to thank Mr. Popple and everybody that assisted him, and I know he had a lot, and oftentimes, like we said, we'll start name to name, we leave people out, but all those that you mentioned last night, tonight, thank you, thank our staff, congratulate Mr. Zalz and Mr. Popple on the new contracts they received, they've done an excellent job for this county, and they've surrounded themselves by excellent people, and I appreciate both of them as we all do, thank you guys. And also, unfortunately, today, there was a shooting in our community, and I just ask that you keep those families in your prayers, both families, and just, you know, let's move forward from this, and hopefully, we won't experience that again for a long, long time. Other than that, that concludes the chairman's report. County manager?
Yes, sir. During Hurricane Irma, this is thanks for the damage to BJ Edmond Road where it was washed out, it's been closed ever since that time. FEMA initially estimated the damage to be approximately $12,000 to $15,000. After several appeals, we did finally get them to agree that the damage was actually around $100,000 to $100,000 for that road. An RFP for that work has been released. There's a mandatory pre-bid meeting that will be held on site on September 17th at 10:00 a.m., and the bids will be due on October 3rd at 2:00 p.m. That work will consist of stabilizing the slope, slope of the ditch, and with a bulkhead, and repaving the section of the road that was lost. Our 2019 element- Our twenty nineteen element projects consist of a, a fox covert on the Harris Neck Road, some new coves over the Johnson Jane, drain, drain road between Ty Bear Shop and Saddle Gardens and a drainage project, uh, in Shelton Bluff near the Shelton Baptist Church. That RFP for the fox coves and the coves on Johnson Drain Road has been released. That mandatory pre-bid meeting will be held on, uh, at the commission office on September twenty-fourth at ten a.m. And those bids are due on October tenth at two p.m. So those projects will become, be all for approval pretty soon. And then I'll echo what Commissioner Watson said on the Shelton Bluff Fire Station. That crown, that concrete foundation has been, uh, has been laid and the red iron beams are scheduled to start being erected next week. And at this time, everything appears to be on schedule. And last but not least, I, I thank y'all for having the faith that we live through to run the county and, uh, thank y'all for your extension.
Thank you. County attorney's report?
Uh, simply is a, it's an honor to continue working for McIntosh County. I, I think that I see improvement every day. And there, there were times when I worked for the county years ago that I couldn't say that. But I, I continue to see improvement every day. I'm so excited about how emergency management works and, and, and things are getting done, guys. Congratulations to you and thank you for having faith in me.
Thank you, Detective.
No need for executive session.
We're done. Then further on our agenda, we will.
Considering like that three pages, that wasn't that long?
Yeah, I wasn't about that. I was glad.
Yeah.
Next item will be to approve the agenda. You should have the printed agenda before you. Any questions, comments, or a motion on the agenda?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion by Commissioner McClellan to approve. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Commissioner Callag. Any further discussion on the agenda? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Question carries in. All right, next item will be to approve minutes. We have an August twelfth work session, an August twelfth rate intermeeting. We have an August fifteenth, ten a.m. coven hearing and August fifteenth, seven p.m. coven hearing. August sixteenth, special call meeting. August twenty-sixth, special call meeting. August thirty-first, special call meeting. Those minutes or any packets? Everybody's had time to review them. Are there any additions, changes, deletions, anything? Okay, here none. Someone might offer a motion on those minutes?
I'd like a motion we approve all the minutes, uh, August twelfth, thirteen, fifteen, fifteen, sixteen, twenty-sixth, and thirty, fifty-sixth minutes.
I would have a motion by Commissioner Watson to approve all. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Callag. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Question carries in. We'll move right into the section F, visitor presentations. We have Mr. Ty Popple, Public Safety Director, for an update on the hurricane.
I tried this last night. I'll try to do a little better today and streamline a little bit. I need one of you to magic assist toward in on it. Basically, we had another close call. We were scheduled for ten fifteen inches of rain, high winds, hurricane force winds, and flood inundations. And, uh, we didn't get, we got lit. We were successful as far as what we did in activating the EOC and keeping y'all posted and, uh, citizens of the county posted on what was going on. So we did a good job of doing that. There's all those places that we can improve in. We left a list back in the back of your packets there on the page of the county manager's report. Have some people we need to recognize as far as what they did for us. One of them was school board. They were fantastic. Anything we asked them about, asked them to do, they were there for us. Of course, board commissioners, y'all support this new decision we made. Also, we had team in there and they're not visiting here. We had two GMA representatives with us every time, Diane Adams and a Don Strength that were, uh, there for us. Anything we asked of them, they took care of it with state. Moving around along. There's a couple of things due to this storm and us being lucky and not having the inundation we had. We had a total of nine trees down. Nothing serious, no flood inundation, no, uh, heavy rains. But, uh, we still lacking people signing up for the special function league registry through the health department. And we put it out on Facebook and try to get it out further in the dairy views by how they can go and sign up. Well, we had several people calling if there's hurricane that could evacuate for sale or buy their sales and didn't have family with the system. And if they're not on that register, we can prepare for them. Other thing was code red alerts. And if we get more citizens signing up for it, we can get word out better about what's happening and what's coming its way to us. And the other thing is re-entry passes. I don't know how many people called me about re-entry passes and now they're approved through GMA. And you have to go to the GMA website to get the application form and you can submit through email and get your passes. They're going to decide what schedule you go or what category you fall into as far as re-entry into, uh, after disaster. Other than that, I said in your, uh, sheets I gave, we explained a lot of what went on. It's kind of like a timeline and what we can do to improve some things. Other than that, we got lucky. Everything went smoothly.
We appreciate it. I'll pick on you a little bit because last night you made everybody accept the school board. Then tonight you didn't. You, you left off the city police department, the sheriff's department. And you covered them well last night and I appreciate it.
Yeah, I had everyone up there. If it wasn't for every county department, every city department.
Road, water, everybody was there.
Everybody, uh.
City road crew, city police department, sheriff's office, everybody was there.
Yeah.
And we appreciate it.
And wasn't going to take up a lot of your time reading on everyone, but they all missed it.
I did, I, last night you did leave them out, so I just did it for them. You want us to leave them out?
I appreciate it.
We appreciate that. We appreciate you, everybody. Everybody, everybody did a good job.
Yes, sir. There's a great effort. It's not one person doing it.
Unfortunately, four storms in three years were kind of getting good. We've had enough practice.
Might not come back.
That's right.
We got some more kicking around in there, uh, tropics. And hopefully they're going to be fly bys or go somewhere else. We won't worry about it. We'll keep monitoring this and what happens.
Thank you. Okay, next under visitor presentation, we have Mr. John Reiken, Goodland Mills and Kay, we incorporated to talk about the McIntosh County Recreation Complex, proposed complex.
Wouldn't it be possible if you set up every year so that they can?
Sure could.
I just had someone else on site that didn't really put and say.
All right.
Might be years ago. Sorry.
I got it. I need to work on it.
All right, I'm, uh, excited to be here. Glad to be here. Thank you for this opportunity. I'm John Reiken with GMC. Rob Brown is also here. Part of, uh, EPG, the cultural planning group was acquisition about a year ago. And, uh, and Rob kind of brings our landscape architecture services and sports field design services to cultural jewelry. So, uh, glad to be here. Couple of parks I want to bring up that we've worked on in the past that have components from those parks that, that we propose in your park. Park over, uh, this Chalk Lock Park. It's a multi-sport park. It's for tribal sports. It has softball fields, uh, baseball fields combined. It has soccer fields, uh, tractor fields, and also some signature fields, more of a tournament play, kind of championship field. They, they use it, the C Boxer uses it for cross-country meets. High schools use it, local universities, community colleges use it as well. Just want to show that was, uh, as a, as a similar project. This is another larger scale project. It still has the same components as far as the tennis component, soccer field, multi, multi-use type field for football, soccer. Can be played different directions for younger age groups for multiple, multiple field use. And also this was, a lot of this was synthetic turf. If we were to explore that, that, uh, initiative for that type of playing surface. You know, let's, let's go ahead and turn it to your park. Your park is approximately seventy acres and we're, we're looking at doing a couple of football soccer fields on it. Four field, kind of four field pond, we call it, kind of a pinwheel shape. We're showing three hundred foot fields on there so you can play, uh, baseball, softball, multiple age groups on those fields with temporary fences or using the permanent fences that we have. Lot of, lot of travel ball sports, uh, twelve and under are using that two twenty-five field and under. And, uh, have a four field complex. You could host a weekend tournament. Have league ball during the spring and, uh, play tennis on. And there's tribal sports going on in the park. So there, there's always fields in continued use. And also we're showing some tennis courts. Uh, we're showing some walking trails through the, uh, lowland areas here. Parking, that would kind of ring road parking that would go all the way around and have a, or parking there. Approximately, we're showing around four hundred parking spaces. That would be, uh, sufficient for that size. And then we're also showing areas that we could expand, uh, for future possible gymnasium. We have playgrounds, uh, potential pond for storm work control, but it's also be used as a feature as well. So, um, that, it, it'd be great for this community. It'd be, you build it, they will come.
All right. You know, last night we had just touched on you were at our workshop last night and we had asked you, you know, just a question about, you know, what y'all are experiencing in rural communities. Are you seeing, you know, new complexes?
We are, we are. I, I actually just met today with the Pierce County. They're looking at doing expansion to their park. They're looking, I guess, population wise, maybe a little bit bigger than McIntosh County, but not, not the same comparable. And they're, they're going through the same planning stations right now. We're seeing it throughout Georgia and then southeast.
Does anybody have any questions or comments or anything I want to add?
Any, any idea of any kind of economical impact that this had on our county?
Oh, wow. Uh, we'd have to do some study of that, uh, kind of a feasibility study, but those, those, there are numbers out there. We sure, we can, we can look into that.
Any commissioners have any questions or comments at this point? I know we have a action item coming up on the agenda that may have some questions. But y'all any questions or comments for Mr. Reiken at this time? Everyone here none. Thank you for visiting. Thank you for presenting. Appreciate you being here last night. Thank you. So that concludes our visitor presentations. We'll move into public here. And we have, um, received comments on, uh, we'll go into our public here on how we open. And we'll receive comments from the public on proposed fiscal year twenty twenty operating budget for all county funds. All commissioners should have a proposed budget in front of them for twenty twenty. So, um, at this time, we'll open the floor to any, any public who has questions on the budget. I skipped over you. Let's do this. I'll close the public here and then I'll bring you back up. I'm sorry.
All right, thank you.
My full attention was to recognize you again in the meeting.
I, I, you got a lot more?
I'm sorry. So we will be in this public here and then again, the floor is open for public comment. And if there isn't a public comment, the floor will be obviously down with the commissioner staff if they have any comments.
I'll go, I'll go. The county budget is the most important law that the county commission and acts every year. And by law, it has to be budgeted. The budget in front of you is budgeted for all county funds, including the general fund, all special revenue funds, and the enterprise fund. If this budget is adopted later on in this meeting, we would have a general fund budget of twelve million, two hundred and forty-two thousand, one hundred and sixty-nine dollars. Of this amount, sixty-one percent is collected through taxes. That'd be various taxes, property taxes, uh, outdoor tax on vehicles, timber tax, all those taxes. Twenty-three percent through fines and forfeitures, five percent through charges for services, one percent through licenses and permits, and ten percent through other services. Or other revenues. As far as the expenses, sixty-eight percent are salary and benefit. Seventeen percent purchased for contracted services, seven percent for supplies, two percent for utilities, three percent for capital outlay, and three percent, uh, for transfer to other agencies. That'll be something similar to the transfer to the board to, to the things they do for us and, and D backs and things such as that. The twenty twenty budget does allow for a five percent cost of living raise for all county employees. It also allows the fire stocking money to go from fifteen dollars a run for firefighter to twenty dollars per run. This, this budget also provides some additional funding for several county facilities, including the only, the only ball fields, uh, the courthouse and the community center on the lower end and Sappaway. As you look through your budget, I just, I recommend reading the budget messages. There'll be a lot more details in there.
Yeah, any commissioners have any comments at this time? Okay, it's a lot of work that went into this. We had a very productive retreat. It was more than just that day. Department head, staff, everybody worked hard on this. And, um, I think the manager said, what, this is the twelfth budget you've been up on now?
Eleven.
Eleven of the budget? It's the first time there was ever a surplus, a grand total of about six thousand dollars. And we chose as a commission to pass that on to the firefighters, so, uh, that's where that surplus went. But good job on this and, um, if there's no comment from the public, we're going to close our public hearing at this time. So, um, the public hearing will be closed and we'll move into item H, which is old business. Consider amendment to the McIntosh County's own vote. Don't stop. Before we go into that, Mr. Keith. Mr. Keith is our chief tax advisor. And, uh, he had some information for us that I was supposed to do at the very beginning of the meeting.
Thank you for your time today. Hello, thank you for your time today. I have a little written statement. First, greetings to our honorable commissioners. Speaking on behalf of McIntosh Board of Assessors, which consists of Chairman Muniz Moore, Vice Chair Sandy Lason, board members John Vernon, Thomas Gore, Ronald Williams. I, your chief appraiser, wanted to, to base new information from our department. For, that's why we are audited twice a year, uh, once by the Department of Revenue and once by the Department of Audits. The first form in your package are the results of those audits. The first being from the Department of Revenue, which states that the McIntosh County two thousand nineteen average on tax digest has been found to be improper form, authorizing the tax commissioner to collect taxes. The second are the results from the state audit, but the sales and appraisals were matched to assessments of McIntosh County and found to be in compliance. Each county in Georgia must be close to forty percent ratio in sales to assessments. If not, you're deemed to be out of compliance, which occurs a per parcel penalty. McIntosh County overall ratio for two now, two thousand nineteen is at thirty-nine point six three percent. We have passed each audit for the past four years. Next, you will see the five year history for McIntosh. Through the diligent and hard work of my staff, the digest has increased the past three years. During my tenure, we have corrected the state forest land grant issues. Also initiated, initiated a full review of all mobile homes, which has brought in an estimated ten thousand dollars in collected back taxes since June. Within our budget requests highlighted were concerned about some of the aging equipment and vacant positions within our office and hope you can provide us with the tools necessary to continue to serve the citizens of McIntosh County to the best of our ability. We would like to recognize the tax commissioner's office, the clerk of court, both city and county building and zoning office, and also you, the commissioners, in becoming a more cohesive effort in serving the citizens of McIntosh. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I'm sorry I skipped over you. I heard nothing positive things out of your office that's been there and, um, we really do appreciate you. I've heard it from other department heads, our staff and everybody. But thank you. Any commissioners have any questions or comment for Mr. Payton?
Just keep on keeping on.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
All right, now we will move into old business, item H. Be considered amendments to the McIntosh County zoning ordinance. This. This is an action item, it was postponed from last month's meeting to this month. And I think with some stuff that's coming up further down the agenda, there was some discussion in the workshop last night to actually, to deny this, to put this down. Is there any comments you have?
No sir, just like as you mentioned last month, we asked you to postpone those amendments due to some discrepancy between the zoning board and admin staff. And this month we're asking you to adopt a contract that will bring you the whole ordinance. So we are asking that you deny the changes that were presented last month.
Okay. All right. Is there anyone like to offer a motion on item one under old business?
I make the motion that we deny the McIntosh County Zoning Ordinance.
From a motion to deny, is there a second?
Second.
So we back Commissioner Watson. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Oy.
Motion carries down. All right, that's everything on our old business, we'll move into new business. Number one, consider resolution 2019-11, adopting the fiscal year 2020 operating budget. This is an action item, does the manager have anything else he wants to add at this point? Okay, this is the budget we just had the public hearing on. Does any commissioners have any questions or comments on this budget? All here now, someone want to offer a motion?
Commissioner, make a motion that we accept resolution 2019-11 to adopt the 2020 operating budget.
I have a commission, a motion to accept by Commissioner McClellan, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Watson, any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Oy. Motion carries down. Okay, number two, consider a contract with Coastal Regional Commission to prepare a new zoning and subdivision ordinance. This is an action item. There's no one here with the CRC tonight, but they were here last night and did a presentation, but would you like to speak on that, please?
Yes sir, this contract is for the CRC to facilitate the revision of the McIntosh County zoning ordinance and subdivision ordinance. Our current ordinance is very vague and very hard to manage at the zoning office and the admin office. The cost of the revision is twenty-five thousand dollars, which Mr. Lemon stated last night. It's actually fifty thousand dollars, the state will cover the other half if you do it through the CRC. Has been budgeted in the 2020 budget. The CRC will draft, draft the ordinances, facilitate all meetings in the steering committee and facilitate all public hearings. They expect to have us draft it in six months and file adoption.
Thank you.
Mrs. Lovett is here.
Ma'am.
Mrs. Lovett is here.
I am with the CRC, but I'm not speaking on this issue.
All right, thank you. Is there any questions or comments from the commission on this?
I would like to make a comment in the sense that it's a great opportunity for us to write some, I won't say wrong, but to make some clarity. And so I invite the public to make sure that as we appoint advisors to these boards that they will get with those individuals to make sure their voices are heard. So once these rules are in place, it is my intention to always vote to support the boards that have to live by these rules.
All right, someone want to offer a motion on the contract with the CRC to prepare the new zoning and subdivision ordinance?
I'll make the motion that we create a contract with Coastal Regional Commission to prepare the zoning and subdivision ordinance.
And a motion by Commissioner Watson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Watson, any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oy. Motion carries down. We'll move into number three, consider appointments to the McIntosh County's zoning ordinance steering committee. This is an action item, there's a list in your packets. Manager wants to speak on it?
Just, just on the list, I made some suggestions for positions to drive a killing. That being two commissioners, county managers, the deputy county manager, code enforcement officer, the building and zoning administrator, the building inspector, two members from the planning and zoning board, two members from the historic preservation board, three members from the Sapporo Island community, and three general community members who I would say would probably need to be a builder, a real estate agent, people that still, people that use the ordinance.
All right. Again, this was discussed in great detail in the workshop last night. There's some names on the list ahead in front of you. And I think someone wants to offer a motion with some other names?
I'd like to make a comment first.
Absolutely.
To clarify and qualify everything, what we just talked about, I guess most everybody understands it. But the agreement that we have now with the CRC and Coastal Regional Commission, these folks that we'll name in just a moment will be working in conjunction with the CRC. And they're, they're just a liaison group within each other. So we had some John Q. citizens involved, we had Coastal Regional Commission involved. A lot of different, I guess a lot of different identities. So we feel like we're going to get some good response and get a good agreement together at some point. And the sooner the better. So that was just to clarify what's going on. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to, by the way, we reviewed this last night in our workshop. Our manager has made some recommendations, some of us have made some recommendations. And in the essence of time, I'm going to make a motion regarding several of these people, Mr. Chairman. And we'll see if it's agreeable with the rest of the folks. The steering committee's suggestions and our recommendation, or at least I'd like to make the motion, that the two commissioners that represent the steering committee would be Roger Watson and Kate Carwacken. And also an alternate, David Stevens, in the event that Mr. Watson is not able to attend because he is definitely employed in three or four different positions. But I'd like to make that recommendation. Of course, the county manager is Patrick Zalz, deputy county manager Sean Jordan, code enforcement officer Ty Hopple, building and zoning administrator Archie Davis, the building inspector Donna Moody. Also from the planning and zoning board members, there's several members here, but we identified two. Mr. Frank Lunsford and William Chamberlain. Also on this motion, I would like to include from the historic preservation board, Mr. Buddy Sullivan and Denise Moore. Sapporo Island community, we named three. Tracy Walker, Mr. Bill Hodges, and Maurice Bailey. The community members, Tony Martin and Mr. Martin Leesma. We avoid one. I'd like to make a motion that we approve these that I've just read and then I think we can identify additional.
All right. It's a long list of names, did all the commissioners get that?
Who was the third one for the Sapporo community members? I have Tracy Walker, Bill Hodges, and Maurice Bailey.
So we have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Watson. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Oy. Motion carries down. All right, number four, consider contract with Goodwood Mills.
For the community, all members.
I thought you were just saying we didn't come back.
Oh.
But we can address that right now.
If that fits only two, it'd be an even number of four.
You said this person need to be of a certain.
Somebody that would use the ordinance as maybe a real estate agent or builder or developer.
I'm going to throw a name out there, how about the chairman of the development authority, Chris Harper, if he would be willing to serve?
That leads me to a question. Has everybody on the proposal has been asked and they've accepted to serve? Because this is going to be a pretty lengthy process.
Some have, some haven't. There's some obvious, I don't know if you forgot, but it's a place. And the Sapporo Island community members have been approached.
I'm just checking. Whether or not, and I don't know if those people that can serve. What about the builder that was brought in at the last month's meeting that was building over there?
Mr. Mitchell.
Or like we mentioned, Sharon Graveson being involved in some of the community stuff.
Yeah, I was just trying to tell them, I was getting them, go. They're active in the community or they're active on building and zoning and code.
Or another name, I'm okay with. Sharon Graveson.
So put that in form of a motion.
I would like to make a motion to add, Ms. Graveson assuming that she's willing to serve as the third.
You say Sharon?
Yes.
Okay, okay, yeah, for example. Yes.
You good with that? But we would need to ask her, and I obviously haven't asked her.
What was the first name? Sharon.
S.A.R.R.O.N.
Used to be known as Jordette. So is that the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Watson, any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. All right. Oy. Motion carries down. So now, item number four, consider contract with Goodwood Mills Kaywood GMC for engineering services for the McIntosh County Recreation Complex. That, obviously that was just what was shown to us in the business presentations. A lot of discussion last night on this, manager have anything he wants to add at this time?
Yes sir, the contract is a basic AIA contract for architectural work. Scouting services include a master plan on basic architectural and engineering services, construction, administration services, and post construction services. The overall estimated project cost is five point five to six point five million dollars. The total cost of engineering services contract is five hundred eighty-five thousand nine twenty-five. The contract does provide a termination clause within, for seven days notice. Without reason, there's no termination fee for that. The only change from the contract, from the one of y'all's packets, is section five point four to five point five will be moved in the new contract.
All right, and again, there was much discussion on this last night and weeks and months leading up to this meeting tonight. But this was part of the 2016 squash.
Yes sir.
And it's years four, five, and six for payments on the bond. Years five and six, okay. Years five and six for bond payments on this new rec company. Obviously, we are still in the very early stages of this, but it's time to move it forward. And last night we did discuss, in the event that we get far enough into this and we decided it's bigger than us, it's bigger than what we can afford, it's bigger than what McIntosh County can swing. You know, we did say that we know these initial engineering design surveys, you know, we will be able to hook for approximately thirty-five thousand to begin with.
That's right.
So I just wanted to make that clear. So does anybody else have anything to add or comments with that? All right. Well, somebody offer a motion to consider this contract with Goodwood Mills Kaywood?
We'll make a motion to approve the contract with Goodwood Mills Kaywood for the engineering services for Recreation Complex.
I have a motion by Commissioner McClellan, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Watson, any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Oy. Motion carries down. Number five, appoint a local government agent for Housefield 381 Abandoned Mobile Home Act. This is an action item and we'll ask that you please make comments.
Yes sir, Housefield 381 is a law that was passed by the General Assembly and it became active back in May first of 2019. And after they removed light and raised property values by removing abandoned mobile homes throughout the county, throughout the state. That requires us to appoint a local government agent who's qualified to determine if an abandoned home is derelict or intact. And once that determination is made, it is deemed to be non-lethal. The, the act gives guidance on how to get rid of that number of homes through the courts. My recommendation for that is to move to Mr. Archie Davis.
Okay. Anybody have any further comments or questions for staff members?
Does the bill specify what qualifies as inhabitable?
Thank you for providing. Yes, it does provide evidence. What is the definition of derelict? Would be the.
It goes on. It was, in the ventilation.
That's right.
Fire, you know, water, act of non-nature.
The manager has made a recommendation of Mr. Archie Davis, would someone want to offer a motion to that effect?
Make a motion to appoint Archie Davis as the local government agent for HB 381 Abandoned Mobile Home Act.
A motion by Commissioner Watson, is there a second?
No second.
Second by Commissioner McClellan, any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Oy. Oy. Motion carries down. All right, number six, consider resolution 2019-12, rescinding state of emergency for Hurricane Dorian. This is an action item. I think this is pretty self-explanatory, you have anything to add?
No sir, just brings us out of state of emergency, puts us back in our late day operations.
Someone want to offer a motion on number six?
I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution 2019-12 to rescind the state of emergency for Hurricane Dorian.
Motion to approve, Commissioner McClellan, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Carwacken, any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Oy. Motion carries down. All right, number seven, consider intergovernmental agreement with McIntosh County Development Authority for restaurant equipment. This is an action item, manager, please speak on this?
Yes sir, this IGA, to turn over the restaurant equipment in the old Wendy's building that was McIntosh County Industrial Development Authority to sell on behalf of the county. The IGA allows the development authority to market the equipment to investors and developers in the county who wish to open a restaurant within the county. It also puts the equipment back on our ad liborant tax digest, once they sell it to that individual. Any proceeds from the sale of the equipment would go and turn back into the McIntosh County Visitor Center.
Anybody have any questions or comments on number seven? Someone want to offer a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the resolution 2019-13, deeming mobile home tax. Oh, I skipped then. Okay. I did run on through this. Make a motion to accept the intergovernmental agreement with the McIntosh County Industrial Development Authority for the restaurant equipment.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Watson, any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Oy. Oy. Motion carries down. All right, number eight, consider resolution 2019-13, deeming mobile home taxes as uncollectible. This is an action item. We had several people speak on this last night. We had Mr. Keith Payne speak, we had Mr. Juan Nelson speak. I know Ms. John Anne's here tonight. Did you have anything to add, in case there's any questions, is that what you're for? All right, we appreciate you being here. So, manager, would you like to speak on this, or the attorney, you're the one?
Yes sir, resolution 2019-13, which authorizes the tax commissioner to write off of sixty-nine thousand, two hundred and twenty-four dollars on uncollectible mobile home taxes. These taxes have been deemed uncollectible because the mobile homes no longer exist or they're no longer within our county lines.
Okay.
Can I just ask, I don't want to get ahead of myself again. Just can you explain a little bit, I know we had a lot of discussion, but what will be kind of moving forward? The plan for making sure that we don't have seventy thousand dollars in uncollected taxes? So that we can.
Well, at the right now, what we're looking at, I mean, we have our president here who is vigilantly going out, visiting, you know, this town, checking these things. his, you know, his staff, checking these things, because, you know, prior to that, people were not getting permits, you know, so we had no way to know when, when something was taken out on the weekend or whatnot. So, it's basically him going out, you know, his, his staff going out and checking. Um, that's how they found so much of this, you know, is, is not being within the county. Um, so we are being vigilant in that.
And since the public will be able to watch, can you, maybe some of it's just not knowing, maybe, can you, they should know, but what, what do they need to do, I mean, other than pay their yearly taxes, but if you're leaving the county, they're going to just hook up to it and...
Right, they, I mean, they should go to the building and zoning, and apply for a permit, a moving permit. Um, that's going to be transferred over to the assessor's office, who in turn then knows when, you know, to remove it from the tax digest. We make sure then that all taxes are paid before they can get that permit to move it, so...
And everyone should know that if they own a piece of land, and they're going to bring a trailer in onto that, they would need to go where to get?
Also to, for another permit, you know, to move in or move out, they should have a permit back.
Or, or demolition permit.
Yes.
Alright.
Any other questions or comments on this? Would someone like to offer a motion on resolution 2019-13?
Make the motion that we approve resolution 2019-13, naming mobile home taxes as uncollectible.
A motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Watson, any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carries on. Okay, number nine, consider resolution 2019-14, amending the fiscal year 2019 budget. Twenty nineteen, manager, please speak on this.
Yes, sir, this, this, this resolution events the 2019 budget, um, allocating additional revenues of a hundred and eighty thousand dollars to the state court fees lines on the revenue side, and an additional a hundred and eighty thousand dollars to capital expenditures in the sheriff's department on the expenditure side. Uh, this expenditure would be used to purchase additional patrol vehicles for the county sheriff's department. Uh, with the addition of these vehicles, our fleet will get closer to where it needs to be. We have been ordering vehicles out of our 2016 squads, which is, is, is improving our fleet and, um, reducing our burden causing our patrol vehicles.
Thank you, sir. Any questions or comments on this item, or any questions for staff? Okay, here none, someone like to offer a motion on resolution 2019-14 to amend the 2019 budget?
I'd like to motion that we approve the resolution 2019-14, and this is the 2019 budget.
Alright, we have a motion, is there a second?
A second.
Second by Commissioner Carwacki, any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries on. Okay, number ten, under new business, consider employment contract with the county attorney. This is an action item, manager, please speak on this contract.
Yes, sir, this is an employment contract with county attorney, it's a three-year contract to expire on September 30th, 2022. All provisions of the contract remain the same as the previous contract and the terms that were discussed at our annual budget tree.
Okay, alright, um, again, we discussed this at the vertical tree, and we discussed it last night in the workshop. Any further discussion or comments on it tonight at this time? Someone like to offer a motion on the employment contract with the county attorney?
Make the motion we approve the employment contract for, for the county attorney.
A commotion, a motion, a motion, a motion by Commissioner Watson to approve, is there a second?
One second.
Second by Commissioner McClellan, any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carries on. Alright, last item under new, uh, next to the last item under new business, number eleven, consider employment contract with the county managers, this is an action item. Do you want to speak to us on the old contract?
Yes, sir, uh, this is an employment contract with me for four years, um, set to expire on September 30th, 2023. All provisions remain the same as my previous contract and the items that were discussed at our annual budget tree. The only difference between my, this contract and my previous contract is, uh, vacation time from three weeks a year to four weeks a year, and the contract no longer allows for a hundred dollar a month technology allowance instead of counting, driving, or counting cell phone, and counting mobile hotspot.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Any further discussion at this time? Someone like to offer a motion on the county manager's contract?
I'd like a motion that we approve the employment contract with the county manager for the four-year period.
Motion by Commissioner Watson to approve the county manager's contract? Um, is there a second? Second. Second by Commissioner Watson, any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carries on. Last item under new business, consider changing the October 2019 meeting date. This is an action item, and I think we talked about, what did we talk about last night?
October 7th.
October 7th. Would someone like to offer a motion on changing that date?
Are you going to do a work, are you going to do a workshop, man, at a meeting in the same regular?
Yes, sir, we are. Workshop at five, meeting will be in the morning?
I don't, I don't think it'll be an heavy agenda at all, thankfully.
October 7th, that's the first. It'll be the second.
It'd be the first, it'd be the first Monday, but the second Thursday.
The second Tuesday, I'm sorry, we're basing that on the second Tuesday.
Okay, okay. So, it's going to be up, thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Think you'd need to list the time for the start of the regular meeting, also, for the motion.
Right, so, if it pleases the commission, October 7th, we'll have a workshop at five, and a meeting, the regular meeting will be at, um, 5:30.
So, I'd like to make a motion to change the October, uh, meeting to October 7th, with a work session at five o'clock, preceded by the meeting at 5:30.
Do we have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Watson, any further discussion on this change in the state? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carries on. Alright, that's everything under new business, so we'll move right into county commissioner's report. We'll start with Commissioner Carwacki.
I have a report.
Your report, Commissioner Watson.
Yes, on yesterday, Maggie Van Conver, and that's what it is? From 4H, uh, gave a presentation about 4H, and one of the main things that I took away from it, that I want the public to know, is that she's limited on the number of kids that she can service in the county, that she's the only adult. In order to expand the number of kids, and to give them more opportunities, we need more adult volunteers. So, I would encourage the citizens to consider volunteering with the 4Hs, so that more of our citizens can take advantage of this great opportunity. That's it, that's it.
Thank you, Commissioner Watson, Commissioner McClellan.
I just had a few thank yous, I wanted to thank Mr. Popple for coming tonight, and the list of volunteers that he gave us, and that we worked with last week on Hurricane, uh, on the incident that we, we missed, thankfully. Um, also, uh, the animal services with Marion, um, giving us a report and being very diligent with that. I know we had an incident that was in the paper, I think it was last week, and they're doing a whole lot with that department, and I just want to commend them for that. Um, also with the recreation complex, I know that we talked about it last night, and then again tonight, but just want to kind of thank the recreation board and the past commissioners for that vision. Um, I am a, a personal supporter of that, um, with three kids that play a lot of sports, and we get in a lot of complexes, and I'm excited for what it can do for our community. Um, and last night, I mentioned pickleball, and tonight it didn't, so I want to make sure we got that out there. We've got, we've got a group that's really into that. Also, the assessor's office, I did want to thank, um, Keith, while he's here and in front of the camera, because, um, you know, I think that it's been a pretty big job for him to shore up everything, so to speak, and get everything up, um, to compliance, and for us to be so close to that forty percent, um, is, is, says a lot. So, I want to thank you for that, I appreciate all your doing, and your staff, so...
Did that conclude your report? You don't forget about the adoptive foster right there, at animal services.
Yes, the adoptive, yes, I love that one.
Commissioner Watson.
Uh, just, I would like to mention Mr. Patrick Zalzman, and his staff, and people, Ty Popple, and all the lawyers here, and all the claws, but, uh, Patrick and his, really did a great job as well, so thank you. And the 2016 squad is underway as far as our fire station up in Sheldon Bluff. And it appears that, um, it should be, the new fire station should be complete about mid-November, because our, our deputy county manager, and I'll put you on the spot, so, uh, we thank you for all your help, and that's it.
Okay, so we'll move into the chairman's report, and I too would like to, uh, thank Mr. Popple, and everybody that assisted him, and I know he had a lot, and oftentimes, like we said, when we start naming names, we leave people out, but all those that you mentioned last night, tonight, thank you, thank our staff. Um, congratulate Mr. Zalz, Mr. Popple, and the contracts they received. They've done an excellent job for this county, and they've surrounded themselves by excellent people, excellent people, and I appreciate both of them, as we all do, thank you guys. And, um, also, unfortunately, today, there was a shooting in our community, and I just ask that you keep those families in your prayers, both families, and, um, just, you know, let's move forward from this, and, you know, hopefully, we won't experience that again for a long, long time. Other than that, that concludes the chairman's report. County manager's report.
Yes, sir, um, during Hurricane Irma, uh, this is thanks for the damage to BJ Evans Room where it was washed out. It's been closed ever since that time. FEMA initially estimated the damage to be approximately twelve to fifteen thousand dollars. Um, after several appeals, we did finally get them to agree that the damage was actually around a hundred and nine thousand dollars for that road. Uh, an RFP, uh, for that work has been released. There's a pre, a mandatory pre-bid meeting that will be held on site on September 17th at 10:00 a.m., and the bids will be due on October 3rd at 2:00 p.m. Uh, that work will consist of stabilizing the slope, slope of the ditch, and, uh, and with a bolt head, and, uh, repaving the section of the road that was lost. Our 2019 element projects consist of a, a fox cove on the Harris Neck Road, some new coves over Johnson Jane, Drane Road between Ty Bearish and Sapporo Gardens, and the drainage project, uh, in Sheldon Bluff, near the Sheldon Baptist Church. That RFP with fox coves and the coves on Johnson Drane Road has been released. That mandatory pre-bid meeting will be held on, uh, at the commission office on September 24th at 10:00 a.m., and those bids are due on October 10th at 2:00 p.m. So, those projects can become, to y'all for approval pretty soon. And then I'll echo what Commissioner Watson said on the Sheldon Bluff Fire Station. That crown, that concrete foundation has been, uh, has been laid, and the red iron beams are scheduled to start being erected next week. And at this time, everything appears to be on schedule. And last but not least, I, I thank y'all for having the faith that we live to, to run the county, and, uh, thank y'all for your attention.
Thank you. County attorney's report.
Uh, simply it's a, uh, it's an honor to continue working for McIntosh County. I, I think that I see improvement every day, and there, there were times when I worked for the county years ago that I couldn't say that, but I, I continue to see improvement every day. I'm so excited about how emergency management works, and, and, and things are getting done, guys. Uh, congratulations to you, and thank you for having faith in me.
Thank you, that's clear.
No need for executive session.
We're done, and further on our agenda, we will be in a...
Considering, like, I had three pages, that wasn't that long?
Yeah, I wondered about that. I was glad.
Yeah.